I'll call this meeting to order by the county commission. Secretary, you want to call the roll?
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Present.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
All right, if everybody can please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I warned you, I was gonna do it. All right.
Yes. All right, I'm going to appoint Commissioner Jackson as presiding commissioner today since the presiding is absent.
Perfect, perfect, thank you very much. All right, it's time for the consent agenda. We do not have any minutes or financials attached to the consent agenda, so the only thing there would be are other items of consideration that we'll be taking on today. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion? And I will second that motion. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. First item on the agenda is our county clerk, Ms. Brumfield.
I'm gonna have to show her what she posted this stuff out there.
Ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, I'm here today to do my annual precinct report. It gets due by the 10th of May each year. Really didn't do a whole lot. All precincts were looked at. They have adequate parking, handicap accessibility, and they meet all other standard statutory requirements. We do have a total of 67,806 voters registered in Christian County, and I've got it broken out, how many is in each precinct. We try to keep them pretty close to the same. The only ones that are real big are James River, which has over 6,000 voters at it, and then, let's see, West Finley, East Finley has almost 5,000 voters at it. So we try to keep them all pretty close to the same. We did make one change this year. We moved the precinct at North Galloway. It was in the Finley River Cowboy Church, and we moved it back to Highlandville Elementary, where it originally was at. We just kind of had some conflict with, scheduling conflict with the Cowboy Church because they have church on Tuesday night, so it was kind of just, I hated to ask them to cancel church. They canceled church last November for us so we could have the whole church, and I just feel bad asking them to cancel church for us, so we just moved it back there. Other than that, everything else is good, and anyone have any questions?
On your James River Church in the youth center, that's Riverside 1 and 2, right? Or is it just considered Riverside?
It's just Riverside.
Just Riverside now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Other than that, I don't really have any other questions.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We'll accept that recording for the record. Highway Administrator, Ms. Beedles.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Right-of-way first.
Sure.
So I have, before you guys say, some additional right-of-way that has been donated by Mr. and Mrs. Marvin and Nancy Parsons on Cotwood Road, which is in the Cotwood Road District. There is a pair of reverse 90-degree curves that are adjacent to their property, and they have agreed to donate right-of-way so that we can actually widen that segment of road and then do some additional widening on those curves. Move some fence posts back that are very close to the road right now, extend some culverts. So we are very grateful for them to donate this right-of-way. In return for the donation, instead of funds, there's a list of things on that donation letter, including what I just said, the new culvert. There's a corner post and gate that's just, almost just west of their driveway, I guess. Not in an impact zone, but they wanted in writing that we would not disturb that corner post and gate. They want to keep the three existing corner posts, so we'll place those right behind the right-of-way line for them. We delineated what the new corner post would be, so sectioned steel posts, which is fairly normal. Some other items on there about putting a little asphalt apron in front of the mailbox. We will pay for the recording of the documents, which we always do. The only item on there, which is something that we do not normally do, is where we install that water gap, just outside the culvert extension at their request. That will be at the right-of-way line slash property line. But again, in exchange for...
Would cost more to do it.
Exactly. So we're very grateful for them to work with us on this deal. And so everything before you is attached, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
No, I think I'm very familiar with the area and grew up just up the road from there. And the more and more traffic that travels up and down that road, and now there's even some larger trucks, it makes it a little bit difficult. Those are pretty tight corners, and people don't drive as slow as they used to.
Correct.
And so any way to prevent, you know, an accident there, and I think it's very gracious of them to donate that and not, I mean, the work that we're gonna do out there to fix it and even a couple of the little add-ons, it pales in comparison to what it would cost to purchase that right-of-way and make those and not have to put up a fight, so I think that's great. And just need a motion to accept the conveyance of right-of-way.
I'll make that motion. And I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. I have some documents to sign for that item and for the next item. I will just hold those till the end of the meeting.
Okay. Perfect. And now you have an IGA for sales tax distribution program?
Correct. Back in March, we approved the FY '25 sales tax distribution program to the special road districts. Since then, I've been working on the formal IGAs between the county and the special road districts that outline the projects and the statutes that govern and the amount that is awarded. I have all of those back from those groups. They've been signed by those special road districts, our county counselor and our auditor, and so they are just up for your approval at this point. And then I do have some project details here if you guys would like to be reminded of any of the projects or have any questions regarding these IGAs.
For the record, since we're on live on YouTube for people to watch at their leisure, lots of them probably watching right now as we're live on YouTube, if you wouldn't mind going ahead and reviewing those or if you want to know what they are.
Absolutely. Sounds far as special, they have some chip and seal project requests. This for Shipman Road, Stone Ridge Road, Old Field, and Shandy Grove. Total project cost is $143,000. They requested our max, which is $100,000. They were granted 75% of that, so $75,000. Being more of a maintenance project, it didn't reach the full 100%. Billing special is doing some widening and overlay on Greasmer, $140,000 project. They were awarded $80,000. Garrison special, they're doing some road maintenance on Garrison Cut-Off Road. Total project cost 95. They're being awarded 71, $250. Sellmore special, some chip and seal projects. Trout, Tatum, Garner, Horsefeather, Goldenrod, Elk Valley, Medlar, Tennessee, Collins, Myron White, and Milton, about $160,000. They're being awarded 75. Stoneshire special is doing some cross-slope correction on Stoneshire Drive, Raven Hill. They're essentially doing a wedge of asphalt to bring that kind of back up to level grade. And then a hot mix overlay, $102,000, and they're being awarded 80. Ozark special is doing a box culvert replacement on McCauley, which I think is the furthest one as you come off of 14.
Yep, it is.
Total project cost of $422,000, and they were awarded 80.
Very good.
Yep.
All right, thank you for the recap. And as far as Garrison goes, have you heard anything from them? Are they excited to be back in the sales tax distribution program?
I believe so, and I do still have confidence that they're attempting to do everything correctly in the right way.
Perfect.
And I did hear that they were awarded a bridge program grant for one of their bridges from MoDOT, so that's pretty exciting as well.
Good.
I'm gonna go ahead and follow up, just making sure on that.
Yes.
Right, they've turned things around and taken care of everybody. All right, that being said, I entertain a motion to accept the project list and enter into the IGAs with these special road districts.
And I will make that motion.
And I will second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Purchasing manager, Ms. Kim Hopkins. Will?
Good morning.
Morning.
So... We had two contract renewals this morning for repair and maintenance for fleet vehicles. They were awarded several years ago under ITV 2023-14. Several, not just the sheriff is the one that put the bid out, but they extended it to the rest of the county, so if there's anybody else in the other departments that want to use these contracts, they can, and several of the departments have. These are a simple renewal. It's for an additional year. Steve's Automotive has requested a 10% increase on their prices, which was within the original bid that they provided. And then Mitcham Tire said that they would hold their prices at this time, but they wanted to reserve that in case tariffs started to come in, and so nothing at this point has happened, so...
Did they give us an idea of what that max could be based on the tariffs?
Well, they still only put 10% increase on theirs.
Gotcha.
But I'm actually gonna go to a meeting next week on tariffs to see kind of what everybody in the state is kind of doing.
Sure.
So I don't know. We haven't seen anything yet, so we'll just kind of wait and see.
Okay.
Wait and see. So I ask if you would extend the contract renewal for an additional year for both of these.
Okay. So the Mitcham wants to reserve the right to raise their price. Otherwise, they're staying in, but they haven't given a percentage amount that they would potentially...
It's a max of 10.
Are they a max of 10?
From their origi-- and this is, it's funny you say that because we've done this before. Back in the COVID days when supply chain was crazy, and this was happening again in the whole country. We were having to do some negotiations with some contracts because it was actually cheaper to do those percentage negotiations than to throw out and start all over. So, and again, I was in close contact with all of my partners in the state to see what they were all doing, and it was all the same, same thing. I haven't seen anything yet, so I really don't know what that's gonna look like, but we can always say no, and we can rebet it. So that's kind of, when we cross that bridge, I will come to you, and we'll decide at that point how you all want to proceed.
Okay. Because it's gonna be across the board at every tire manufacturer. I mean, it's not gonna be something specific to them.
And what I've done in the past is, when they do those types of things, we ask for letters from the manufacturers so that they can prove that those really are increases, and they're just not doing willy-nilly, and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. That being said, I entertain a motion to agree to the one-year extension for ITV number 2023-14, repair and maintenance for fleet vehicles.
I will make that motion.
And I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you. And I do have some left to sign.
All right. Having no other business until the rezoning hearing.
Got to work this in anyways.
Yep. Having no other business until the rezoning hearings. At 10 o'clock, I will call this commission at recess, and we will reconvene at 10 a.m.
We will reconvene here, the county commission, and now we are going to be doing planning and zoning cases. We have two on the docket this morning, first one being case number 2025-0038, and that is Zach Bishop and Lee Engineering and Associates. Right ahead.
Yeah, they are requesting a rezoning in this case. Their current zoning is A1 agricultural, and they're requesting to rezone to AR agricultural residence. The property location is in the southeast corner of State Highway VB and East County Line Road, up along the northern boundary of Christian County. It also borders Green County to the north, Webster County's right there to the northeast. Surrounding land uses out here are primarily single-family residential and agricultural. Kind of as mentioned, Green County and Webster County fall to the north here. To the south, our zonings are A1 agricultural. To the west, we have AR and A1, and then to the east, we have AR. The applicant here is proposing to rezone about a 39.4 acre tract in the county from A1 to AR in order to lawfully develop and allow for a future primary use that would be acceptable within that zoning district. And the next page there just shows the topo map of the area, and overall, it's relatively flat parcel. Background on the property, it's mostly been a vacant field, ag land for its life. The, I will note that the developer on this property has submitted a sketch plat to our office at this time, but that ultimately, if they move forward with any form of development or subdivision like that, we would need to move to the preliminary plat stage, and then that would be seen by Planning and Zoning Commission for review. And today, keep in mind, we are only reviewing the zoning request. So as far as our land use plan, our future land use map would look favorably at this for dispersed residential or agricultural uses in this area and on this parcel. Compatibility, again, we're located to other single-family residential and agricultural uses as well as similar zoning districts, so we wouldn't see, we wouldn't expect to see a huge compatibility issue with the surrounding existing uses. Connectivity here, again, there's frontage along VB and East County Line Road. So VB would be MODOT for any accesses or anything like that. And then East County Line Road would be the Christian County Highway Department for any access. No specific provisions for landscaping or buffering at this time. Same with the building designs, nothing specific there, and that one I'll go through the building inspections department. Access, we kind of went over, State Highway VB or East County Line Road, depending on the jurisdiction there and where they would reach their approach, who they would need to reach out to. Utility services, the only thing we're aware of out here is electricity. We would not expect any stormwater impacts as a result of the rezoning itself, same with groundwater impacts. And then there are no mapped flood plains or sinkholes on this parcel. We also would not expect any major traffic impacts due to rezoning the parcel. So public comments, that April 21 hearing for this item, we did have several residents get up and speak on this item. Most of them were concerns around potential well contamination due to increased septic systems or potential of increased septics in the area, increased stormwater runoff due to development, potential loss of well water in terms of quality or quantity. There were some concerns over the size and style of homes that may be built in the future. There was a mention of poorly planned growth happening in the city of Rogersville, and that extending outside of the city and into the county. And then there was a mention of concerns of a potential sinkhole on the northwest corner of the property that our mapping doesn't show, and we don't really have any confirmation one way or the other on that one in an official format. As far as staff comments go, the request doesn't really appear to create any significant land use or compatibility issues. Seems to be in line with our future land use plan. It doesn't appear to create any significant impacts to stormwater, groundwater, or traffic or anything like that at this time. And as mentioned, recall that at this time, we're only looking at the zoning district that's being requested, and the question at hand is really, is that zoning district appropriate for this parcel and the area? What's around it, what's going on? So at that April 21 planning and zoning hearing, the commission heard the facts of the case as well as the provided public input, forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval for this item. That's all I got on that one.
Okay, based off the zoning request, what's the maximum amount of lots to be available to be put on this property?
So they could go down to three acre lots. We do typically allow developers to count road right away as part of their acreage in our subdivision regs. So they could look at maybe 10 tracts. There are some regulations under Missouri DNR where once you get to seven tracts under five acres, you have to do basically a soil study for them, and they may set that higher than three acres. If they come back and say five acres, that's going to be your minimum lot size for us. So right now, they're not looking at meeting that. The kind of proposals we've seen from them would be six three acre lots, and I believe three, that would be over five, they're like six or seven acres. So the current proposals we've seen would be ten, or six, seven, nine.
So they have, they have submitted a preliminary plat?
We have, we don't have, we do have a preliminary, I take that back. This preliminary, they have submitted, and they're actually planning on getting on May's P and Z agenda with that one.
Okay.
Looks like three lots per well, four wells total.
DNR lets you share a well up to three parcels or lots. That's really between the lots and property.
I know, we're asking you a lot of questions.
But it's deeper into it, that's not there yet. This is the rezoning I get, we're just getting an idea.
Well, this is, this is one of the reasons why some of these questions get asked, and they don't necessarily play into the decision-making that I make, but I like to know them because this is the last opportunity I have at looking at this information because once we change the zoning, it doesn't come back to the commission at all. It's all going to be handled in planning and zoning. And so these are just things I like to know. I know there was, I received a phone call from a neighbor in the area that was concerned with regards to drilling more wells, and they had stated that wells in Green County had been disallowed in the area because of some kind of contamination. Mr. Wiesenhoff made a phone call to Green County and said that there had been some issues, but didn't think that they were, there was no, I think the information he got back was there was no prohibition on drilling wells in Green County in that area, so that shouldn't adversely affect us. In Christian County, we're all, we're all sticking the straw then into the same drink, so as long as everything is being done by licensed professionals in drilling of the well, then there shouldn't be any issues. During the plating process, obviously, if they're going to go to, and 39, they should be able to get up to 13 potentially on that property. They're probably, and I haven't seen the preliminary plat, but you know, during the rezoning phase, we're not going to talk necessarily about stormwater runoff. The stormwater runoff has become a problem in the county, and so do you know, do you recall if their plat shows any kind of detention or any kind of addressing of stormwater?
To my knowledge, I don't believe there's any sort of detention or stormwater easements. We do have the engineer report, I have not had a chance to review that yet either, but that should include stormwater calculations or information on what they would expect. You know, their road, their roadway, the houses, whatever they're going to add, how that would impact the area.
I mean, three acres is a lot of property for, to get too worked up about stormwater, but depending on the proximity of the structures, if they're all close to each other, you know, and, and...
No, I'd go back through the Planning and Zoning Board before that would be approved.
Yeah, these are just the concerns that I have, that I want to make sure get addressed, you know, at the, at the plating process. Is the applicant here?
I do. The applicant's not here, I'm not very able to professional answer very well the engineering, representing the developer.
Do you have any comments that you would care to make regarding the property?
The stormwater issue should be addressed through the engineering report, as the plan may be said. The plant, the plat will be going through the county's review process to address any issues related to stormwater. Some of the residents brought up current stormwater issues which we cannot address. We can't address existing issues with stormwaters or wells. But we will go into the county process following the recommendations the county has regarding stormwater. And DNR is doing soils testing right now to address the issues on septic and water sources, I think. We don't have the results yet.
Okay, very good. I just like to ask these questions because this is, this is, even though I've been here two years, this is a different process for me, coming from the city of Ozark, where the board of aldermen, they're going to see it at the rezoning and at the plating phase. This is our last opportunity to review that information, and I just like to know things. So is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this project? Is there anyone here to speak against this project? If you wouldn't mind just standing up and giving your name and address? I'll give you a couple of minutes to, we hear your concerns.
My name is Amy Powers, I live at 2171 Hedge Path Road in Rogersville.
The edge of our property is in the thousand feet.
Okay.
And I would like to know why the storm drainage has not been addressed in the plating project. According to our flag subsection B of the major housing, major housing development rules, extension of storm drainage to serve a tract created and provided in direct connection to an existing or approved system is one of the things that they require for our building. As well as the change in location or with easements from water sewer or other public improvement, I, I don't know for sure, but I would like to address how that would affect the wells. A lot of people are concerned about the wells, which was mentioned in the notes. And I, I would also like to see the topographic map, do we have a topographic map for the...
And the other, the part of that is you're going to get a lot of those answers through their next step, where this hearing is just talking about the zoning changes, where you don't require those things in this process, where they're not going to be able, until they go in front of the Planning and Zoning Board, they have to present all those things before they go through some of the, some of the requests that you're asking for.
Is the planning and zoning, would that, would that also be public?
Yes, yes.
Excellent, good to know, thank you very much.
Developer can not talk, everybody stays with questions. We'll have them at these stages before it gets approved. So if you have a big enough concern, the Planning and Zoning Commission will say, we need to see that addressed, and they'll have another meeting, and then if they address the satisfactory for the commission, then they can proceed, or if they haven't, they need to reassess.
Exactly.
So a lot of steps to make sure it's done.
They can reschedule, push it off till they make sure they get what they need. It's a good, good way to explain it, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a topographical map here as far as, I can see the contour lines, there's only one on the entire property, so it is very flat comparatively for this area. But it is a good concern because regardless of, we can't address anything off-site stormwater related, we can't make it worse, you know, the property can't make anything that's already there worse. There is state laws about displacing your stormwater onto an adjacent property, and that all has to be regulated, and their engineers will do a great job. I mean, I've had experience with Lee Engineering in the past, and you know, they're going to look at that because they're going to put their stamp on it, and their stamp is their reputation, so...
I'd hope so. We have, our neighbors to the north have like a little pond, and that pond will overflow in the culvert right, right by our property. Honestly, within those, those lines, it does, we get backed up, and so we end up like a little pond in the corner of our yard.
Culverts are great as long as they're cleaned out. If they don't keep moving, if they don't stay cleaned out, then they don't do any good, so. All right, anyone else here to speak on behalf of this project?
Amy Powers, and I'm 2171 Hedge Path as well. I just, I guess my question is, is that if we already rezone it, then do, do us as homeowners that are in that area have, really have any say?
Well, your voice will be heard through the plating process when it goes back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So yes, you still have the ability to speak and address your concerns. The way the system is set up, we have step-by-step, right?
Right, yeah.
And technically speaking, when you're going through the rezoning, we're only looking at, is it appropriate? Is there similar land uses adjoining this area? So we're not going to drop in industrial, you know, we're not going to put in a come and go right there. That's not appropriate, but residential to residential, even, even as you, I've lost the term that's used in the planning world, but as you, as you escalate the intensity of uses, you know, you see where there's an appropriate changing of zoning designations. You can look in this city right here, that we're setting in, and that hasn't always been done. So you may have industrial setting next to commercial, setting next to residential, setting next to multifamily, setting next to, and you really should have a good ebb and flow of your planning and zoning that your uses are intensifying, you know, to the city center or, or out.
Right.
Or being less intense in usage, so. Honestly, looking at this, there's nothing I can see, and a motion may be made here in a minute, but there's nothing I can see that would disallow the zoning change because everything's right there, it's similar in use. You're lucky that you have the ability, that the density is not going to be greater than three acre lots, you know, because then your, your fears would be much more in-depth, you know, if you were going to one acre lots or half acre lots.
And as you move forward, as you're concerned, go to those planning and zoning meetings, talk to Planning and Zoning Board so that you can make sure that they're listening to your request as they go forward.
Excellent question, well, and he said there's a process, you may have already answered this, but so will they, before they decide what they're going to do as far as plats and how many acres and all that stuff, make sure that the geological study is done, or will they just move forward?
With, with respect to what geological?
Like water resources and how it's going to affect the septics and the water.
DNR.
DNR is going to take care of all of your, and the health department's going to issue your, your permitting for your, your septic systems, there's processes in place for every one of those steps. Soil tests, the engineering firm has already talked about the soil tests that are being worked right now, so.
But will they wait for that?
They wouldn't get a building permit without it.
Yeah, correct.
You wouldn't be able to...
Okay, so even in the planning, like you can't get the permit unless you have that and it says what you need?
Correct, you wouldn't be able to build a house.
Yeah.
That was, okay, that was one of my questions, that's all I've got, thank you.
Miss Beatles here, she is our highway administrator, she also has a seat on the Planning and Zoning.
Yes, we were, yeah.
So she's very familiar with the process.
Yeah, she told us, yeah.
If there's no further discussion on this topic, I'd entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve case number 2025-0038.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Move on to case number 2025-0058, that's Greg and Enman LLC, Dave Bodine, for our request.
So again, this is another rezoning request through our office. The current zoning on the property is A1 agricultural. The requested zoning is R1 suburban residence. The property here is at the southwest corner of Greg and Enman Road, just outside of the city of Nixa. Surrounding land uses here are single-family residential, some platted subdivisions, and some agricultural uses on the east side. Our surrounding zonings to the north across the road is the city of Nixa. To the east across the road that's braid out is the city of Nixa. To the west is a platted subdivision in the county that's zoned R1. To the west is a platted subdivision in the county that's zoned R1 and RR1. To the south is RR1 and then to the east is R1 and kind of the southeast side of that Our project description here, the applicant's looking to rezone about a 19.3 acre tract from A1 to R1 to allow for the lawful development and future primary uses that would be allowable within that zoning district. And then on this map, you can see a small sinkhole, kind of, kind of center east side in orange and kind of outlined in red there. Just wanted to point that out before we moved on too far. The next slide here shows your topo map as well as the sinkhole again and the floodplain area off to the west there. Background and site history here, this parcel has been a vacant forested parcel for its entire life, appears completely undeveloped. And then again, the developer here has submitted a sketch plat, but again, we are only looking at the zoning district being requested and if that's appropriate for the parcel. The preliminary plat, if submitted to our office, will go to planning and zoning commission for review and approval at a later date. As far as our land use plan goes, this is in tier one with the city of Nixa's urban service area. We did reach out to the city of Nixa back in July of last year when the property owner first reached out to us and before we moved forward with any rezoning or anything, we reached out to the city to get their comments. We don't want to run them through here and then have to turn them around or anything. The city of Nixa gave us some comments back and then towards the end of the year in November, sent us another message and the ultimate determination from them was that at this time, they are not interested in annexing the property or requiring an irrevocable consent to annex. They just requested that the county ensure that appropriate right-of-way is collected along both Greg and Inman Roads and obviously we would do that in line with OTO's major thoroughfare plan, so that'll be part of the platting process if they do move forward with that. We do note that in Nixa's future land use map, they do mark this area as appropriate for residential type uses. Compatibility for the parcel. Again, we are located adjacent to several other single-family residential uses as well as single-family platted subdivisions and some agricultural uses. And then there are subdivisions on the northwest and south sides of this parcel. As far as connectivity goes, it has frontage along both Greg and Inman Roads and those are both still currently under county maintenance, so they would need to reach out to us or the highway department for their new road approach if they move forward with that or for a driveway access. No specific provisions for landscaping or buffering at this time and nothing for building design. Again, access would be through the highway department with the county. Utility services, electricity is available along Inman Road. There is water and sewer potentially available from the city here. It is in the vicinity, but at this point, the applicant has intended or has stated their intent that they do not want utilities and that's part of why we kind of had a lag between July and like the end of the year, they were working with the city. The developer kind of indicated they really wanted to do three acre tracts on this, well in septic, keep it in the county, stay away from utilities and all that. So currently, that's kind of the thought on this one, but obviously the preliminary plat would ultimately determine which direction to move on that. As far as stormwater impacts go, we would not expect anything as a result of the rezoning. At the time of platting or subdivision, we would expect that to be included as part of their engineer's report and see the calculations there. Groundwater impacts, same thing, we wouldn't expect any impacts just due to rezoning it. Floodplain and sinkhole, there is about a 2,000 square foot sinkhole that I noted earlier on the property and then there is no floodplain mapped on the property, but there is that zone A special flood hazard area off to the west there. Transportation impacts, we would not expect anything major due to rezoning at this time. Again, the engineer report moving forward would be required to have some traffic counts and some, some information for that area. So public comments, at that April 21st meeting, the applicant spoke to their intent to move forward with six three acre lots. Again, nothing's official until it is, so that's just what they're looking at right now and that seems to really be the direction they are wanting to go. And then their representative spoke to the intent to kind of mimic the subdivision that was directly to the west of this parcel. We did have several residents speak at that meeting. Concerns included stormwater runoff issues coming from the subdivision to the north out of the city of Nixa, poor road conditions along Greg and Inman Roads, density of the subdivision being potentially greater than three acres and then the additional stormwater runoff, traffic, that kind of thing that that might cause or include. Property tax increases for surrounding landowners and the loss of rural lands, natural areas, that kind of thing. Generally, all residents who spoke were in opposition or had concerns to this item. As far as staff comments go, it's very similar to the, the last case we just heard. The rezoning itself does not appear to create really any significant compatibility issues or land use issues, stormwater, groundwater, transportation issues, and it would be in line with the cities and the counties' future planning. Again, at this time, just remember, we are looking at the rezoning request, the zoning that's being asked for, what's around the, the uses. Any subdivision requests would come to P&amp;Z later. So at that April 21st meeting, the planning and zoning commission heard the facts of the case as well as the provided public input and they did forward a unanimous recommendation of approval for this request to this board. That's all I have on that one.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir. I represent Greg and Inman LLC. I know it's not about what's going there, but you're going to ask those questions. It's six three acre lots. These folks' concerns are all have been valid, but they've made a lot of assumptions before the last meeting, which is a little frustrating for me, but if I wanted to be in the city and annex, we would have done that already. We wouldn't even be here. I fought since July to get six three acre lots. The other option is to make significantly more money, take more time and put 70 or 80 homes there. That's not what we want to do. It's a wooded parcel. They want to keep their wooded parcel. Sorry, progress is progress. We're not trying to hurt anybody's feelings or be upset by anything. We've given the provisions for the roads that the county wanted, or the city wanted Greg and Inman to be able to be wider. We gave those with no hesitation. I went to several meetings with the city. Because this is 50% contiguous, the city wanted me to annex. I have fought and fought and fought to which they don't believe me or understand to get this, to do six three acre lots and stay in the county. It's been a long process and money's been sitting there in the land, not in me developed. So I am on team Nixa for sure, but this is in Christian County and you don't have three acre wooded lots that you can ride a bicycle to the high school, anywhere available. And that's what we're trying to maintain. Will there be some deer that move out of there? Yep, that's, that's part of the cost of progress, but there have been assumptions made that we're going to clear cut the whole piece. I'm removing trees to put a road in. I want the homeowner to decide on what trees they want to keep and what they want to move. Some will be cut down for sure, but that's the beauty of a three acre wooded lot is you have woods. So that's really my main concerns. Their water issue, which was brought up a lot, was created by subdivision to the north that the city allowed. We've seen that in Sleepy Hollow as well, which is on the north side, where they funneled all the runoff into one spot, which has created a worse problem for the residents downstream from that. Our calculations from our engineer states that there shouldn't be an impact to that based on six houses and one road. Clearcutting and putting a bunch of roads to street, water retention would obviously be necessary. I understand how all that works, no problem at all, but we'll rely on the engineer's report versus just feelings about how we think water's going to flow. We'll just let the engineer decide and you guys, in the next process, will approve that. Questions?
I think you're exactly right. You would be wasting a bunch of money and time to come here to rezone this if you wanted to go to the city. It wouldn't, doesn't make any sense. You don't need to do both processes.
They, they would even have to say, you know, it's the city.
Right, correct. Correct.
Yeah, the, and it's interesting to see that the, the city has submitted their comments. I had them here from me. No intention of annexing, I mean.
They want to.
Now they're saying no, so.
That must have been back from the beginning.
It took some work.
The, the topography in the area, actually, I mean, running water and sewer for, for six homes is quite costly and, and I'm not sure of the topography there if you potentially lift station to push it.
And I've just mentioned here.
Where it needs to go, so you've already reached out to the health department about the necessary permitting for, for septics being so close to city services?
I have not. We have done that in the past and it's not been an issue. We developed some light on Nicholas Road and there's city services right by where we're at and we put three septic systems in and now we already have approval for a fourth, so I've not put that at the forefront of my list because with having three acres to put that on, I, I don't see it being an issue and the utilities are on the other side of the road.
Okay, yeah.
So that, that's going to give me some, some buffer. And again, we understand Greg and Inman are both, could be improved as far as the visibility and the way they work. We are allowing no access off of Greg Road. It's only off of Inman Road, one way in, one way out, built obviously to county specs, but the ability for them to widen that as future progress continues, we have given our part because we want, I've, I've lived in Nixa for 30 years. Greg Road is not the best road to ride down. I understand that, but we're not going to increase the traffic on Greg Road or access to Greg Road other than the houses and, you know, we're, we're trying to mimic the subdivision that's right, right next to it. We're not trying to do anything crazy. We don't want to build a, you know, 80 houses. The engineer said we could get 85 lots on there if I wanted to, so I don't want to do that.
And I visited, yeah, and I visited with the city of Nixa as well and for a reason they didn't need it, it's because their, their water and septic's on the other side of the road. If they're going anything south, they don't.
They don't need a thoroughfare.
And the only thing in this rezoning that is changing is the difference between three houses to six houses. If it was forced to stay in the regular zoning that it is, it would have to be five acre lots being A1, so that would, that would only allow three to fit in there. So you're talking about the difference of traffic of three homes, so.
All right, perfect. Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this project? Anyone here to speak in opposition of the request? If you don't mind, just stand and give your name and address.
John Martin, 1068 Cedar Chase, directly west of the property. And listen to all the comments that everybody made. There are two huge concerns. One is the stormwater runoff, which as we learned, we didn't know beforehand, will be addressed later. Okay. The other one is what's to stop him from putting in two or three, three acre lots and then going to the city? There is no guarantee, if there's some way in the zoning we could guarantee that all those houses will be three acre plots, we'd all go out here hand in hand dancing.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, I think that's what you're seeing.
Well, you're giving me your word. I've had people give me my word all my life. Some of them didn't mean it.
Well, I mean, you have a couple of different processes that, you know, so to answer some of your protection, right? If he decides to change his mind, then he's going to have to petition the city of Nixa. They're going to have to schedule a annexation process. You're going to get notified, some of those properties are going to get notified because they're going to be within that thousand feet range. You'll have your day in court, so to speak, so.
But currently only you, according to this zoning, you're only able to build six three acre blocks.
That's going to be his maximum.
That's the maximum. I can't do anything smaller than three acre.
If he wanted to do more than that, he would have.
I appreciate that. We're all for that.
He would have taken a different approach. I'm telling you, he did not want to waste his time and money to come here to zone it like this and do this if his idea was to go to the city and do it that way, because he could have probably made more money turning that into the city and doing it, so you're right, you have to take a person's word because that's what they're saying, but I don't see why he would, would waste his time and money doing that, if that makes sense. But it, but he owns the property and unfortunately it'd be like if you want to put a chicken house and you have somebody next to it, it's like, I don't want you to have a chicken house. You're like, I like chickens, you know, it's that same concept. With him owning the property, he's just taking the steps for the zoning and.
There's no way we can guarantee that.
This hearing today is just the changing of, of the zoning portion.
That was our concern, was that, you know, you can take somebody's word for anything, but I'm kind of a frustrated physicist. I'm actually a trained physicist and I like to see stuff in black and white.
Sign.
And we're going to have that.
You can buy it from me. You can buy it from me and keep it and do whatever you want to with it.
Well, we thought about it.
So right, right now as it stands, he can put three houses on it. We don't, we don't even talk.
Right.
He just doesn't. Now he's asking for six and, and there aren't no guarantees.
I heard what you said earlier.
There's only, there's only two guarantees in the world, right? Death and taxes. So other, everything else is up to the potential. Everything else is, is subject to the potential of change, right? In, in theory, could he make a little bit more money putting 85 houses on it? Yeah, but his headache's going to be a whole lot more. And in some cases, it's not worth the differential. I've known a lot of developers that have, have gone in and they've put in four houses instead of 50 houses because they can make just as much money at the end of the day with the four than they could with the, with the 40 or 50, so.
I know now you're wanting that guarantee, but I think he's probably your biggest asset, being there and doing what he's doing instead of taking that to the city, so I would see more as, I'd be patting him on the back more than I would be arguing with.
I don't know, I mean, I got.
I'll give you no reason to not trust me.
In, in theory, as it sits right now, you know, and I'm, I'm going to be the first person, every single time something comes forward and you're compact and contiguous, my, my question is annexation, because I understand the USA agreements and where we're going. The fact that they said, no, we're not interested, that's good. You, you, and once those houses are built, you probably never know they're there because of the wooded landscape that's there, you know? Now you're going to, you're going to hear all the chainsaws for a while while they're clearing some roadway and some homes, but a lot of people this close to the proximity of the city limits would love to have this kind of buffering.
Absolutely.
You know, in, in your scenario, living on Cedar Bluff, is Cedar Bluff?
Cedar Chase.
Cedar Chase, pardon me.
On Car Chase.
And you're on three three acre lot over there?
You've got a nice little buffer there.
Six, six three acre lots right west of that, the property we're talking about and all of them are, now, we didn't know this going into the meeting today and I, we had no idea how they were zoned, but Scott has since found out, talking to Scott, this Scott to this Scott, that we're all zoned R1 except for one lot, which is RR1, so we really don't have a leg to stand on arguing about what the zoning is.
These people want a house just like yours because they love that area and they, and they love it, so that's, that's the hard part is, like I said, I think.
I'm aware of that.
And I understand, yeah, I understand it's nice to be able to have those woods and things, but I think he's, he's, he's a better teammate than he is an enemy. I think he's really doing you guys a big favor by doing that.
And that could well be true. You see where I'm coming from. I just wanted a guarantee.
Everybody's always protective of what's going in next to them. I totally get it, so. Is there any, are you, was that all your comments?
That's it.
Was anyone else here to speak on or against this, this proposal or speak about the proposal?
We can't discuss the runoff. But we do want to be involved with that because it is critical. This guy suffered a bit because the city was screwing him 20 years ago.
Yeah. Guys also realize you have an existing water problem.
Yeah.
That I did not create.
No, we're not stupid.
Please don't interrupt. I'm trying to talk and make a point because you have an adamant against what I've been trying to do. I'm not trying to impact anybody negatively at all. In fact, the exact opposite, as he said, I am your biggest asset. So if I can't get this to go through, you know what I do is I settle it. And you know what they're going to do? Is they're going to put 85 lots on it. And that's not a threat, that's a, I'm a, I'm on team you, way more than I think you want to realize. I don't want a water problem for you. I've dealt with water problems. We have land right in Sleepy Hollow. You know what they've done? They've cut a six foot wide, three foot deep trench all the way across our field. I had no control over that. The city has made that worse. I understand water problems. There will be an engineer that has to get a water impact study with numbers. No guess, no I think it flows this way, none of that. It's guaranteed with numbers, will it impact you or not? That's all there is to it and they will have to approve that. I don't need to make it up.
And he won't have to fix your old problems. You're still going to have the same problems you had, he just can't make it worse.
That's right.
Does that make sense?
We understand.
Okay.
All right. Let's, let's rein it back in a little bit here and please, if you don't mind, address all the comments up here.
Sorry, I didn't mean to talk out.
No, you're fine. If you can just address them up, up this direction, so. All right, any future, or pardon me, any further comments with regards to this zoning hearing? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve case number 20250058 with the unanimous recommendation from our Planning and Zoning Board.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You just keep paying attention as it goes through the plating process and you can address those concerns and...
We will be notified.
Same way you were notified about this.
Your phone number.
And you guys can, yeah, I mean, he already gave a number, but he's probably...
All right. We'll go into the Commission Comments section of the agenda. Do you have anything, Mr. Williams?
National Day of Prayer, so I was blessed to get to go speak in Nixa to Aldersgate Church this morning on that, so just...
And we had one here in Ozark, so it's very good. If you're a person of faith, if you don't mind throwing a few prayers around to all of our service members and our first responders, even leaders in politics as we're trying to make good decisions on behalf of you, our boss, you know, if you have a moment today, you know, say a little prayer for everybody and let's all get along and love one another and take care of business, so. There's no other comments?